Well, good evening, everybody. Nice to see you here today. Thank you for joining us at the Encinita City Council meeting. It is Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Krantz.
I think you asked for me, but I couldn't hear you very well.
Councilmember Krantz is present. Councilmember Henze?
Here.
Councilmember Lyons?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moscow?
Yes, I am present.
Thank you. Mayor Blake's fair.
Here.
A lively group tonight. All members of the City Council are present this evening.
Okay, thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no special presentations or proclamations tonight, so we'll zoom forward to oral communications. Do we have any?
Yes, we do. We have four this evening. I'll call you three at a time, and just a reminder that you do have three minutes. Mark Wilcox, Brian Blair, and then Valerie Scherskin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Mark Wilcox. Yesterday, in the county newsletter, Chair of the Board of Supervisors Nathan Fletcher proclaimed the month of October to be the Red Ribbon Month throughout San Diego County. And the San Diego County Administration building will be lit up in red October 23rd, which is the official start date of the Red Ribbon Week. The newsletter went on to report that the county valued the prevention of drug abuse and supported living a drug-free lifestyle by wearing or displaying a red ribbon. It stated that Red Ribbon Month offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, and 80 million people across the nation participate in Red Ribbon Week activities in families, schools, and communities each year by wearing a red ribbon. It is a uniform way for citizens in San Diego to take a stand against drugs and drug use, especially during the opioid epidemic in which a record 107,000 Americans died of a drug overdose last year. I understand that all the PTAs in the Encinita School District have Red Ribbon Week chairs who are coordinating activities to educate our students and community members. I remember when those schools would send students to the Encinita City Council to pick up Red Ribbon Week proclamations. When I asked when that was going to happen, this month, I was told that the city did not want to provide proclamations for Red Ribbon Week anymore. It seems that now, more than ever, that it would be important for students to see that their city leaders do care about their good health and safety. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we did provide certificates in the past, and I would hope that we would do that in the future. I don't know if that's something that the city manager can address.
I mean, I think that to address the commenter, we used to do it here at City Hall. Then we did the proclamation. We do the certificates, but we don't do it at City Hall. In part, it's about management of the City Council time and making sure that we have the ability to get through all of the official business. So I think we still do do them, but it's not done at City Council any longer. Okay. Thank you very much for the next comment.
Hi, Brian Blair. I'm glad to be back. I've gained an appreciation for this forum and for the opportunity to be heard as a resident. So, thank you. I'm back tonight because there are a growing number of voices that are expressing concern and asking for traffic mitigation along Quail Gardens Drive, which, of course, I'm grateful for. I think the hope is, as I'm understanding how cities operate, is that this becomes an agenda item for the council, for the city, and then is ideally there's, it's agreed that something should be done, and there's a traffic committee that maybe makes suggestions, and then a budget. I'm just trying to understand this process, and it's fascinating, but I appreciate you listening for a minute. This is just an aerial view of Quail Gardens Drive between Locating and Encinitas Boulevard, and I want to highlight two or three things in the two minutes I have. One is that there's a couple of places where the downhill slope is especially steep. Right now, the speed limit's 35 miles an hour, and in those two steepest points, cars very naturally will accelerate five or more miles an hour during these two very steep points. And one of the scary things is, is that I see a lot of kids. And the other day, I saw a mom with two kids in her front basket, you know, in the front of her electric bike, in the bike lane. And it is so scary, because this is a fairly narrow road, and the bike lane is fairly narrow as well. And so you see cars going by 45, 50 miles an hour with a mom and two or three kids with helmets in the front basket, and it makes your heart stop. I drove by this mom the other day, and I slowed respectfully to what I think should be the speed limit, to 25 miles an hour, because it allowed me to pass her and not feel like I didn't feel threatened at that speed. I'd like to think that she didn't feel threatened at that speed. I recently understand that the cities can actually determine what speed limits should be, and that they've, maybe the state's giving control of speed limits back to the cities. So I hope that a slower speed is considered on this stretch of road. This is another little image. Those little yellow circles indicate the nine places where something could happen on this stretch. So whether it's stop signs, stoplights, a roundabout, I know those are expensive. I truly hope that there's thoughtful consideration given just to slowing this down. With the added density that's coming, it's becoming more of a neighborhood with these, all these units that are happening on both sides. There are going to be a lot of young people, a lot of families, a lot of kids on bikes. It'd be so great to not wait until these projects are completed, but to get in front of them and to say, you know, we're going to make it safe before you come and bring your families here, before your kids are on bikes. We're going to get ahead of that, because this is Encinitas, and we care. One last thing I want to say that I really love, I love these green bike lanes. Whoever was the architect of that, however many years ago, they're genius, because you can see them. And I think it does something for the driver to know, that's a bike lane. I need to avoid that. And every time I see one of those, I thank the people who are involved in making them occur, and I feel safer in them, and I feel safer when my kids are in them. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Valerie Scherskin, followed by Trina Priest.
Good evening. I'm Valerie Chereskin. I'm a flutist and secretary with the North Coast Symphony in Encinitas. I'm just here on behalf of the orchestra to invite the mayor, the deputy mayor, and the city council members, and your families as our honored guests at our 75th anniversary concert and celebration on Saturday, November 5th, at 2:30 PM at the San Diego United Methodist Church. And I brought invitations to pass out. We're presenting an all-American program featuring William Grant Stills Afro-American Symphony and Aaron Copland's Lincoln Portrait, which will be narrated by a really great actor and musician, Victor Morris, reading the words of Abraham Lincoln. For 75 years, the orchestra has provided the Encinitas community with an opportunity to experience live symphonic music at low cost and at a convenient Encinitas location. We appreciate the support we've received from the city and the community and our recent proclamation. We appreciate that, and we look forward to growing our involvement with the cultural life of Encinitas for many years to come. So we do hope you will join us on November 5th, and we look forward to welcoming you to the concert. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. 75 years is a long time. We've only been a city for 30-plus.
I know. It was started by a greenhouse owner in Encinitas 75 years ago. It's great.
Yes, well, thank you for the personal invitation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As a mother and educator, I wanted to share with you some information from the County Board of Education yesterday. Item 11 on yesterday's agenda was about extending and enhancing fentanyl education for students throughout partnerships with schools, which is a good first move. However, I was moved by a story told by a parent from our city so that the supervisors would know that fentanyl is not the only scary destructive drug plaguing our young adults. And these are some of his words. "My wife and I are parents of three young men, ages 15, 23, and 25. Seeing them happy and thriving is all that matters to us. Marijuana, pot, weed, vape, whatever you want to call it, is, for many youth, not a harmless recreational drug. For adolescents who try today's weed, like my son did, it is often the start of a descent into a living hell that shreds joy, friendships, academic, and career potential to pieces and breaks a family's heart forever. Today's weed is a hard drug. A few months after going from occasional to regular vaping, our son lost all emotion, had no real relationships, and was just vaping at any cost, nothing else, and then things got worse. He abandoned college after one semester, moved back home, smoked nonstop, alienated himself from his friends, spent all his money, and much of ours, and became truly psychotic, and the descent got worse. His intervention, treatment, and day-by-day journey back is slow and fragile, and he thinks death could be a way out. Please remember, high THC-concentrated marijuana products that will be sold in Encinitas storefronts are a scary and destructive drug that Encinitas parents need to anticipate and educate their children about." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's a very powerful and upsetting story.
That does conclude oral communications.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We did not have closed session today. Does the city attorney have anything to say on that matter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I have the report from the closed session we had at the special closed session, which was last Wednesday, October 5th. The City Council went into closed session on one item, which was employee review, city managers' review, recessed, and there is no reportable action.
Okay, she's still here. Okay, great. Now we're on to item number seven, changes to the agenda.
Mayor, there are no changes to the posted agenda. And then moving to the consent calendar, no items have been removed from the consent calendar by the public.
Okay. Then we are on to item 10A.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Yes.
And I'll second it, and I did want to comment on item 8E and how excited I am to be voting to award this contract and for the art at the El Portal Undercrossing. The organization that has come together to produce the art in conjunction with students is a great group of locals, especially Jerome Wright, who was instrumental in doing a whole bunch of work on the mosaics that are part of the, the mosaics that are part of the Santa Fei Undercrossing of the freeway. So I'm excited to see this proposal and certainly appreciate the work of the Commission of the Arts in evaluating the two competitive programs, but this organization that has been recommended, I think, is tremendous, and the name is escaping me right now.
I think it's Campaña Studios.
Campaña Studios, yes, that's it. And so thank you to everybody's efforts for getting this art underway.
Yes, and I just, I just want to emphasize what you've just said, because that's a great local organization, Campaña Studios, and it also incorporates the students. And I know that when we first went out to bid, we had no bidders. So it's great that in the second round, we were able to get a really local, high-quality organization to work with our local school and produce this local art project. It's exciting.
And as of now, we have no art filling the spaces that are dedicated to the art, and I'm looking forward to seeing that soon, as well as the art that is going in on the Encinitas Boulevard underpass at the Interstate 5. So great to see public art and the city stepping up to make it happen.
Exactly. So that was a motion, and Deputy Mayor seconded it? Did you? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously, so now it takes us to item 10A.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing to review and consider the introduction of City Council Ordinance Number 2022-12-13 and -14 related to the California Building Standards Code. So I will hand it over to Crystal to handle, and others who might be handling too.
Thank you, Mayor Blake's fair and council. I'll be presenting the item tonight, but I'll be, sitting next to me will be my support staff here that helped with the item. We have Katie Inez, principal planner, and Hans Schmidt also helps. He's our fire marshal. And Ali Sondre is here. He's our building official, and they all supported the development of this item before you tonight. The recommended action tonight is to introduce ordinance numbers 2022-12 and 2022-13 and 2022-14. Ordinance number 12 adopts the 2022 California Building Code standards, the 2021 International Fire Code, and the 2022 California Fire Code as required by law. The 2013 ordinance, sorry, I'm sorry, the number 13 ordinance amends the Building Code to enact amendments relevant to energy efficiency and solar requirements. And then the number 14 amendment amends, thank you, the Building Code relevant to building decarbonization, electric vehicles, and water conservation. So I'll start off with the building and fire codes. They get updated every three years by the state and the International Fire Code Committee. And then the state requires that local jurisdictions adopt the state code and incorporate them into our local code, municipal code, every three years. So that is the item before you tonight. The state also allows the local municipality to amend the codes, as long as those amendments are based on a local, unique geotopographical, geological, and climatic conditions. And then finally, the codes must be effective by January 1st, 2023. So we'll start with some of the amendments that count, that staff is proposing in the Building Code and the Fire Code. This is a high-level overview. First, in the Building Code, we're recommending the establishment of a Board of Appeals. We're also recommending the addition of definitions for closet, enclosed space, and newly constructed building. And then the Fire Code, we're recommending that that includes a revised definition of mid-rise building, and then the incorporation of an already adopted ordinance 2020-03 to incorporate the security gate access requirements. And so now I'll remind you of the ordinance that was adopted last year, ordinance 2021-13. This is the ordinance we commonly call the Green Building Reach Code. It enacts these requirements that are in the table that I'll go over. It enacted a requirement for residential energy efficiency that goes beyond the state code. This is for additions and alterations. It also has a requirement for non-residential energy efficiency going beyond the state code for, again, for additions and alterations. It also has a requirement that all new buildings be constructed all electrically. And again, this is a reach code going beyond the state codes. And then the last one is a requirement for non-residential to install solar photovoltaic, and this would include new addition and alteration categories. So that's what we have on the books currently, and what tonight's item does is proposes to re-adopt these so they are consistent with the new 2020 Building Code. So I'll go over some of the amendments that we're recommending in a little bit more detail. So here's kind of an overview of both, of some minor revisions that are in both the Green Building Code and the Energy Code. So as I mentioned, the revisions are one to help the amendments align with the 2022 California Building Code updates. One of those changes in the Building Code was to separate out the multifamily code requirements from the other non-residential requirements. So we've done the same in the ordinances that are before you tonight. And then third, the all-electric requirements were previously in the Energy Code section, and we're recommending that they get moved to the Green Building Code section. This will actually help streamline the state approvals and make it so that we only need to take the all-electric requirements to the Building Standards Commission and not to the California Energy Commission. This was a result of our previous experience adopting or getting these requirements approved in the last cycle. And then lastly, we've added an electric vehicle service equipment permit streamlining component, and this is in the Green Building Code. And this is consistent with the state requirements that were, that are, were adopted in AB 1236 and AB 970. Next, I'll go over in a little bit more detail the amendments that we're proposing to the Energy Code. So as it relates to solar PV, we're recommending that for non, new non-residential, that these requirements actually be removed, the reason being that the new state code actually is more advanced now, and our previous reach code is no longer a reach. It's required statewide, so it's sufficient to remove this section. Next is requirements for existing non-residential. So again, we're revising the text so that multifamily requirements are separated out from non-residential. Here, we're also retaining the gross floor area compliance option, so that remains in the reach code, but we're recommending deletion of the time-dependent valuation compliance option. We found in practice that this calculation is actually infeasible to implement. It results in a very high amount of solar that would need to be installed on a non-residential building, to the point that a utility would not even be allowed to permit such an amount of solar. And so for that, we're recommending, since it wouldn't be used, to remove that component. And in place, we're recommending that we add, as an alternative, that an existing building could use the new residential energy code requirements for solar as an alternative option. Moving on to energy efficiency, we're still in the Energy Code here, so we'll go over the requirements for existing residential. So what we've designed in the new recommended amendments is that we offer additional measures to comply with the requirements. Previously, we had just a couple of, of measures that were fairly limited, but were cost-effective. Now we're actually opening it up, so we have a whole table, a whole menu of measures that, that a, an applicant could choose from. And if they'd like, they can choose measures that may not have been evaluated to be cost-effective, but if that's the type of measure that they'd like to implement, it would still meet the energy efficiency requirement and, and meet, meet the terms of the code here. And then secondly, we've added some minor enhancements that were made for the compliance options for clarification and for consistency and in alignment with the city's climate action plan. This was kind of some code cleanup and some refinement so that we can make the, the reach code even more, not stronger, but more specific in what we're requiring. So here's an example. I didn't want to go over them all in the presentation, but just one example here. For existing duct sealing, we are, previously, we were accepting that in an existing residential home, if the ducts had already been sealed, that that could comply with a requirement. But instead, we're tightening it up a bit and requiring that that duct sealing had to be done within the last three years, and that it needed to be certified by a home energy rating system or HERS raider. And then now I'll move on to existing non-residential energy efficiency requirements. Again, multifamily is now moved out. And then similar to the previous section, the new requirements in the state Energy Code are actually more advanced now, and that means that our previous reach code is no longer a reach, and we can therefore remove it. Next, we'll move on to the Green Building Code. So in this code is where we've moved the all-electric requirement for all new buildings. We've made some clarifications here. We've made some clarifications here as well, so I'll go over them. We've, as I mentioned, we moved the text from the Energy Code to the Green Building Code. And we've updated the definition of the term "all-electric" to make it more specific that all end uses within the home or the non-residential building must be all-electric. So it's more clearly written. And then next, we have added a reference to the definition of newly constructed building, which is defined in the administrative section of the Building Code. And then we've also added a reference for the definition of fuel/gas, and that makes it more clear that propane is also covered in this part of the regulation. And then next, we've also, we're recommending that exception number three for the all-electric requirement actually be removed. This is the exception for utility service costs when the cost to upgrade the utility side of the service is greater than 20% when compared to a mixed-fuel service. We've found in practice that the exception is unable to be implemented due to the utility actually being unable to provide the applicant with cost estimates for those two different options. We made an effort to work with the utility and come up with a process for these cost estimates to be provided, but it actually was found that the utility is not actually permitted by the California Public Utility Commission to make such cost estimates. So because the exception is not able to be used, we're recommending that it simply be removed. There are two other exceptions for restaurants that need a flame for their cooking, and there's an exception for essential buildings.
It was more in the area of multifamily. And specifically, it was raised, especially when we look at some of the 15 developments that are going to occur within our housing element, and it was a kind of a safety valve in that area. So there's... Was there any outreach to those kind of multifamily developers? And is there any other way to ascertain whether, within that cost benefit, even if you don't have analysis from the utility?
You're referring to exception three?
Right. The fact that it would cost them, especially within the multifamily housing, that it would be... Because our analysis, within that analysis we had to do for the CUC, said that it wasn't a cost burden. But then, when we looked at the multifamily, when you're looking at 200, 250 units, we couldn't, we didn't know. And so this was an opportunity for them to prove that it could actually be a major cost burden for them.
Yeah, when we talked with the utility, whether it's an individual residence or a, you know, a larger multifamily, it didn't matter what type of project it was. They still were unable to do the cost assessments. The other requirement of this exception is you need to have an existing gas meter on your property to even qualify for the exception. So in a case where you have a multifamily with, that would need multiple gas meters, it may not even be that that type of project would be applicable to exception three in the first place.
All right, thank you.
Well, and I just want to weigh in here. I mean, I think we talked about this fairly extensively when we adopted this code, which was that most of our development is the housing element sites. So we didn't want to exclude them from this requirement, because then we wouldn't really be having all that much impact. So I think, I mean, I think that was partly, and I mean, I know there are no public comments here today, and you didn't receive any on this, so I would be reluctant to make any changes to that part at this point.
The only reason why I raised is that we actually, that in a very thoughtful process, we put this exception in there, and that we actually had a lot of feedback, and we thought about it. And so what the staff is now proposing is that we take the exception out, that we actually thoughtfully put in. Because in practice, it can't be ascertain what the cost is. And the only question I have, is because I thought we had a lot of feedback on it, was, was there any other way to ascertain whether or not the cost-benefit analysis that there was a situation, because I wouldn't want to... Because I guess with those 15 housing complexes, developments, I'm most sensitive to having as many affordable housing units as possible.
Yeah, we did explore other options as staff and with the consultants, and what we were concerned with is this exception is quite frequently attempting to be used, we feel, like, in good faith in some instances. And so we were unable to come up with a reworded version of the exception, which didn't also open up an opportunity for possible misuse of the exception. So we wanted to make sure that the exception was equitable, both to, you know, smaller projects, but also the larger ones, too. So with, for that reason, we felt like the best option would be to simply remove it.
I got you. So the fact that we can't get objective analysis from the utility means that we would be basically, if we kept this in place, it would be basically staff making a judgment call in terms of whether or not this was a cost burden, and they would produce a bunch of stuff, and it would be a case-by-case. All right, got you. Thank you.
Okay, and then finally, for, as part of the all-electric portion, we removed the equipment specifications, because they're actually already described in the state code itself. And then moving on to EV charging, we've allowed some exceptions consistent with the 2022 code, and these are specific to ADU and JADU. These were actually exceptions we already had previously in the reach code, but just made it more clear and consistent with the state code. And then specific to new multifamily and new or existing non-residential, we've maintained our local reach code requirements here for charger installation. And, but we've notably, we're making a point here that these are in addition to what the state code is requiring. The state code is requiring EV-capable parking spaces and also EV-ready parking spaces, and we would be requiring actual chargers to be installed on top of these other set-aside types of parking for future potential use. And then, lastly, as I mentioned before, permit streamlining. We've added a section that incorporates AB 1236 and AB 970. And then the final section in Green Building is on graywater, and this is just a reminder that there was an ordinance adopted in 2015 that enacted our graywater requirement for new, single-family residential, and we would be retaining that with these new amendments. And that wraps up my presentation, and we're here available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question. Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Moscow and I were at a ribbon-cutting for a commercial property that was on the corner of El Camino Real and Mountain Vista, and they were talking about, they had basically spruced the place up a lot, and they were talking about how they were working with staff on the electric vehicle charging station requirements, and I was wondering what the resolution of that was. Did that get resolved?
Yes, it did. I've been working with Anna and Katie and Ali on that one. We've all been working on, that's actually the first EV charging station reach code project in the city. And they did their initial project, and we've been working with them to get their EV charging stations permitted and installed at that project as well.
Okay, because I think they were concerned that with ADA requirements and that, that there were, it was really going to have some negative other consequences, and I'm not, so...
Yeah, so that is a good reason to bring up the AB 1236 and AB 970. Those state requirements actually stipulate that the state code supersedes any local code as it relates to parking limitations or requirements. So any EV parking cannot limit the parking, the other parking requirements, and Katie can probably describe this a little better than I can.
Thanks, Crystal. Basically, the state law says that if you're installing electric vehicle charging equipment, that you are okay to remove those parking spaces, that the property owner would not be penalized in that situation if they need to remove the parking spaces.
So you're basically saying there would be fewer parking spaces for commercial properties overall? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. I'm not sure if they thought that was a good idea, there would be less parking, but... Because you still, I mean, okay, but it's moving forward, and it seems like it's gotten self-resolved. This is the first project.
And you still have the EV parking, so it's... The difference between EV parking and non-EV parking is, in terms of the width, is about one foot. So you do sometimes lose one or two spaces when you add a long, a large set of EV parking, but you still have all of those spaces there, they're just assigned for different uses. EV use and non-EV use.
Okay. And then I just have one more question about are EV charging stations at City Hall here? Not the ones up in the parking lot here, but down below for the public. I know Councilmember Krantz and I were both at the ribbon-cutting for that, and neither of our electric cars could actually be plugged in there. So because of the attachments and the type of car we have, and I found that to be a little bit odd. So I just wanted to wonder if we're in the process of making that accessible to all types of EV cars?
Do you, may I ask if you have a, is it a Tesla?
I have a Tesla, yeah, and...
It was related to fast charging. Those units are fast chargers, and the car that I had and currently have doesn't have the fast charge capability. So, you know, I don't know whether, in the transition, we went to all-fast chargers and therefore, you know, eliminated what I think is probably the majority of EV vehicle owners that can't. Maybe someday, a majority will be fast charged, but this kind of transitional period to this, you know, it's unfortunate that we have, you know, these connectivities, this disconnectivity. And, you know, it's one of those areas where I prefer the government get more involved so that you find a standard, so that everybody's kind of on the same page, but I lost that fight.
Well, I wonder, is there an effort to try to make it more broadly accessible?
Yeah, and that's generally the hope when we get more and more EV charging throughout the city, is that the type of, the level of service that's provided at each of the different locations is balanced with the dwell time that you have at that facility, and that eventually there will be enough charging stations throughout the city that if one is not working for you, you can go a couple blocks down the street and find one that will work for you.
Well, and in fact, there was some discussion about the fact that there are charging stations up here in this parking lot, but there was a question about whether those are exclusively fleet charging stations and purchased under a program that doesn't allow the general public to use them. And these are the kind of things that, you know, I mean, if a guy that didn't have the fast charge was out of juice and needed a charger, I know that we have some in the NCTD parking lot, but at the same time, the question is whether these up here can be used. And so I think it would behoove us to be really clear and have signage, and make sure we explain, hey, if you're not a fast charger guy, there's another station over there. Because it's just, you know, this is a situation where we want to encourage this, we don't want to make it a, you know, pain, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I mean, this is the topic we're talking about tonight, and it's really, I mean, it's worth elevating to, we should address this, because I, you know, there are a lot of people with cars that are electric, including two people on the City Council who can't charge at our own City Hall lot, two different ones of them. So, yeah, I mean, I hope that we can take some direction about trying to improve things here with signage and accessibility and thinking ahead about our lease terms as they evolve so that possibly we could have some additional hookups provided that would convert between charging types, which I know some plugins do have, you know. So there have to be some solutions to this, I would think.
And if there's a grant or something that we got that makes them fleet-exclusive, maybe there's a way that we can modify that agreement, and I don't know what it would cost, but those are the sort of things I think we should explore.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor Moscow.
Yeah, no, I think this is a critically important topic, the EV charging stations, the variation. And, you know, until we get to a certain point where there'll be just the bulk of car EVs on the market that are charged universally, this transition's going to be an important time to kind of really think about strategically what type of charging stations we want to allow in the city, because we certainly need a concentration of them, but, you know, we want to make sure that folks are able to, that are able to get to those charging stations and utilize them. So I don't, I don't know if, you know, we have to have more discussion and think about from, on a kind of more strategic level, how we would basically go about doing that and influencing that in our city. In terms of just kind of getting back to a point that the mayor was making about the EV charging stations, I'm just curious, in terms of the weather, and this gets to a question I had, whether the state law was the impetus for the EV charging, for the pursuit of the EV charging stations at that new development? I notice I used the word "new development" in the ensinidis, or was it because we had the reach code that called it a new development? And I ask that because I don't know what the definition of new construction is, and I think that's critically important. There have been construction in our city where I would basically classify as new construction, you know, when you basically put millions of dollars into a structure and extend its life for, you know, another 30, 40, 50 years, and you basically tear down just about every wall except one, that I consider new construction. And so I just want to make sure that as we're kind of defining new construction that we're doing in a way, obviously, it's in, consistent with state law, but basically allows us to implement our reach codes in our building codes, because we think it's critically important to have an energy-efficient building and to have renewable energy pumping through these buildings, and we know that these buildings are going to stand for 50 years. And if we miss the boat now, then we've missed it for 50 years.
So if you want, we can go over the newly constructed building definition that we developed for the recommended ordinance. We have that as a backup slide, if you'd like.
Yeah, let's look at that. And also, as we're looking at that, could you explain? So we already, with regard to the all-electric kind of reach code, we've already gotten it approved by the CUC. So are you saying that, what are you saying with regard to, so we're not presenting anything to the CUC again for permission, or to the Coastal Commission? Where we've already gotten it approved, and there's no doubt that it's approved. And there's, and you may be sorting it in certain ways or something like that, but it's already approved?
I wish that were the case.
Oh, no.
Unfortunately, it's not. We do need to go to the CUC with just our Energy Code for approval, and then the Green Building Code does not need to go through CUC. It just needs to get approved or get filed with the Building Standards Commission. So that's a much more streamlined process, and that's why we moved the all-electric requirement to the Green Building Code. So it's just the energy efficiency and the non-residential solar requirements that are going to need to go to the CUC for approval. They are well aware that these are coming, it's not just ensinidis that has to do this. Every other, all 50 other cities that had reach codes are also having to go through this process right now. So they're going to get inundated, but yet they've assured us that they can process them, and they can process them before the end of the year. But if something were to happen, we're safer with having our all-electric requirements in the green code to avoid having that be taken to the CUC.
All right. And then just one other question, too, with the air conditioning. Is the person, are we assuming that the person that's installing the air conditioning or repairing it is also going to be the person that's, you, I think you've mentioned, you called it an HERS-rated or ERAS-rated?
Yeah.
All right, is that one and the same, or are we having homeowners go ahead?
No, there are independent, actually authorized agents that are licensed by the state, and they're required to go and verify that the equipment that's installed is actually the equipment that is specified on the plans, so...
Is the air conditioning the person in this, would they in fact hold that certification by the state? And so they would be able to do both, or are we asking homeowners to go to two different people?
Correct. So the HERS person is the individual that actually signs the plans, and so that certified agent is going to go to the project at the end of the construction, make sure that the equipment is there, and then they would forward that certificate to the state, and they send us a copy, and our inspectors also collect them at the job site.
Could we have somebody on staff, Roy, that's certified in this, that could maybe... That could maybe our city inspector, who when she or he goes out is able to inspect and say this is qualified under ERS or whatever?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moscow. We can look into that and explore. As for your edification, our building division inspections and plan check services are provided by a contract.
Oh, right.
Through a contract, so we would have to explore that contract and see if we can extend it to include that.
I think it would make it easier on the end user, which is something that I'm interested in doing as well. And just interested in the three years for the duck work, having done the duck work in my house and it costs a lot of money to do, and, and it seems to be holding up. Not that I crawl through the ducks in my house, but just wondering, you know, as we're basically requiring solar installation of solar and with the efficiency of some of the AC units that are out there, and you have all electric houses, of course, you know, we want to make sure that it's as efficient as possible. But how did we derive the three years? In terms of just like that we would, if it's, if I, so I had the duck work done five years ago. Why, why would you say, why is there an assumption that after three years, it's kind of, it may not be as, the integrity of that duck work may not be where it should be, and so we need to have it inspected again? Just wanted to know why you drew the line at three years?
Yeah, it was based on the advice of a, one of a technical consultant that we had supporting us with the development of the, the ordinances. And also the three years was consistent with the code cycle, so that seemed to make sense as well. Yeah.
If I could add a footnote, yes, the, the, the three year period is something that is repeated in the code, in the building code on various applications, for example, for hardship, for interior remodels, for many other applications. So the three years seems to be something that, that it coincides with the code cycle, and that's typically what's used.
Yeah, all right. I mean, I think it doesn't coincide with like the warranties and, and what, 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 when, when you have the duck work done, what they say it's going to stand up to. So I would just ask that we take a look at that as well. And then if you wanted to talk about the.
Oh, the, the newly constructed building definition?
How, how is this different than what, what we have now?
So essentially, the definition is, and talks about if you remove and replace 50% of your roof framing, because we know that there is a lot of infill projects that are done in the coastal communities, and there isn't a lot of vacant land. So basically, people are tearing down, as you said, rightfully that they keep one or two walls and they reconstruct the rest of the building. So the definition, the newly constructed definition is being modified to state that if you remove and replace 50% or more of the roof framing and 50% of the exterior walls, then that would be considered new construction. Alternatively, if you double the square footage of your house, you don't necessarily have to remove the exterior walls, but if you, let's say you have an existing 100 square feet house and you come up, come up and you double the square footage of the house, you either go up or you go sideways, that would also be considered new construction. So those two provisions are put in the code and, or in the maintenance support code. And there are some examples that we prepared a six-page, basically FAQ and put together some examples.
So these are good, and the only thing I would offer is, and this will be my last comment, would be that something provisioned about like if you extend the life of this, this structure for 30, 40, 50 years, then, you know, that to me sounds like it's new. And then also something about the fact that if you, you know, a dollar amount, I see kind of, I think some of our codes even have this where, you know, if you, you know, if your investment, you know, doubles the, the value or something of that nature, I think some of our codes say this. And so just making it consistent where we would have that additional language in there. But it, I think this actually, the 50% is actually moving in actually a good direction.
And can I just ask if, was this circulated, so it sounds like 1A is new and then 2 is new, right? And I just wanted to make sure, has this been circulated to the building community? Are people aware of this who work in this area in our city?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we have talked about it, we have discussed it, and, and the examples have been on the website for several months now.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. All right, let me go back to my colleagues here. Councilmember Krantz.
Thank you. I have to admit that this conversation is pretty exciting. You know, being in the policy business is sometimes not so exciting, you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes on, but this is something that we've been, you know, this, this electrification and the efforts that we've made to join the Community Choice Aggregation Group and other things that's been going on for 10 years. And we're now poised through the leadership of Deputy Mayor Moscow and the, and the board at the San Diego Community Power, we're, I think, really poised to make even further inroads towards not only having our city be net zero, but working towards our community being net zero with as much solar on rooftops as, as is possible. And the implementation of micro grids and a number of other things that I think are going to be critical for the city doing its part in, to, to address issues related to the climate crisis. So very excited to be talking about these things, the previous conversation about these charging stations. I, I do have concerns, the description of the building that has a charging station doesn't seem like a location that would necessarily, like I work at an office complex in Rancho Bernardo, and I could really use a charger there because then I could charge while I was in my office. But that particular area sounds more retail-y. And, you know, I'm not sure that the sacrificing a parking space for a charger is in the best interest of that particular, you know, parcel, that commercial space. So I think one of the things that we need to look at is the use and giving up a, you know, how, how, how many cars actually charge there when they go and shop? I know when I was moving around and driving, I didn't plug in just to get a 10 minutes of juice or 15 or a half hour even, I, you know, it just didn't, wasn't worth it to me. So I know this is all kind of technical, whatever you want to call it, but, you know, this is, these are the sort of things I think we really need to look to see if what we're doing makes sense for our goal, which is to get more people to drive electric vehicles. So the other thing that I recently experienced was somebody who was trying to put solar panels on their roof and had clay tile and had to replace the clay tile in order to do that. And I was disappointed to learn that we make them go through another permitting process for the re-roofing. And I hope that, and I don't know if it's related to the code or if it's just an implementation policy issue, but making sure that we simplify that process as much as possible, I think, should be this council's goal. And I know his installation of solar panels was held up by finding out that he had to have a permit for his re-roofing. I think it certainly makes sense to get an inspector's eyes on the sheathing or whatever when they take the tiles off. But, so I'm not saying that it's, it's bad that he's got a permit, but I think as a city, we need to incentivize the installation of solar panels and any, any permitting that's a part of that should be simplified as much as possible and made as low cost as possible. Certainly, people that are putting in solar panels probably have the wherewithal to be able to pay for some permits, but at the same time, I think that the goal should be to incentivize installing these panels. So as you're looking at the implementation of these codes and, and fine tuning our permitting process, that's one that I hope that you will pay attention to and perhaps modify.
Really fast, I second that idea. I think it's awesome. I don't know that we do this right now in the process where we could like, so somebody comes in and, you know, they're going to put solar on their roof and they have a big, heavy clay concrete roof, and they're going to take that off to check the membrane underneath if it's really old. And so they're, they're kind of doing it aside from solar, but they're doing it because of solar. So it'd be awesome, you know, if we had some way of identifying that from the beginning. Are you doing this to basically further clean energy goals, to be more energy efficient? And if you are, that we could streamline the process even more to basically, to encourage that kind of, that kind of adjustments.
And this is the sort of thing that maybe other cities have, they're doing it already and we can just kind of plagiarize or whatever. You know, if there's a best management practice for something like this, I don't know. But, you know, those are the sort of things that, getting those emails that say we're, we're kind of getting in the way of, of installing these solar panels was a little frustrating for me because I, we need to clear the path and get as many panels on rooftops as possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Lyons.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Krantz and Deputy Mayor Moscow have hit on my questions that I had, so I appreciate that. They're very good questions and good answers. I, I wanted to take just a little bit of time to compliment us on the streamlining that we're attempting to do here, and I think that's going to go a long ways. And being able to streamline it even more is definitely a goal, and I think everyone would embrace that. So the streamlining is, is awesome as far as construction and permitting. I also wanted to acknowledge the, the goal of meeting our CAP goals and, and really being able to measure how we're achieving some of those very important goals in our community. So I just love this improvement here, and you've done a great job of not over, not only capturing the big picture objectives, but the detail. And really, the only comment I, I got from the public was about the duct sealing, and I already spoke with you about that, Crystal, but, you know, honestly, sometimes all those details are just so important. It's not only are we making sure our ducts are sealed, like Joe says, you don't get up in your ducts, you don't look at them, you don't know. So are you making sure your ducts are sealed just to be sure? You're capturing all those efficiencies that you're spending so much money trying to, and so much time and so much energy. And, and we're all so enthusiastic about trying to achieve. So I, I especially appreciate that, that you're also, you're big picture, but you're also taking care of the details of, let's make sure we're really doing what we think we're doing here. And so the, the idea of making sure that our ducts are not only sealed, but certified by an independent specialist, HERS raider is really important. And so I'd like to move, passing these three recommendations for 2022, 12, 13, and 14.
I'll second. And I just had two questions to follow up on Councilmember Krantz's comments. So have, are we streamlining this roofing solar panel issue? Because I, I either received the same complaint or a different complaint about somebody who got a lot of different information from different staff and then was told, actually, it's going to be triple the cost because you have to do this other thing. And have we addressed that?
Basically, we do have a streamlining process both for EV charging stations as well as for PV. The turnaround time on those products are about five days. Only if you have 26 stations or more for the EV charging that the state law allows 21 days, and we keep them under 10 days because they do require more thorough analysis because of the larger, obviously, facility, electrical and, and accessibility and, and structural and so forth. So getting back to your question, in terms of the PV panels and removing the roof tile, unfortunately, you can't install PV, you know, on, on roof tile, as, as you all know, I'm sure. If you've tried to do it, that a good rofer or a good installer will tell you that you have to remove the roof tile. So what people do most often is just basically remove the portion of the roof. If it's 3,000 square foot roof, you just remove the 400 square feet that is under the tile. You replace that with a different roofing materials that, that could accept the, the panels. And the part that gets exempt by the state law is the, is the PV, and, and that's what the city basically subsidizes. But removing the roofing material, you know, the tile, very often it's not because the owner wants to do a good thing, but because it's required by the, by the PV manufacturer, so.
But, so are we streamlining that part? I mean, do you, so if you get, if you re-roof, you don't have to get a permit to re-roof, do you?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
Okay, so, but, so if someone's putting in solar panels and taking out 400 square feet of 3,000.
Right.
So are we, do we have a streamlining process?
Yes, they still, they, they both are done as quick as possible, which is within five days. But, and very often at the same time, but they're just done under different permit numbers. The reason for it is that we have to keep track of which ones are free, which ones are not. And the re-roofing is not free, but the PV is. And for us, for finance, to be able to keep track of it, we have to make them into separate permits. And that's the reason we, we basically disaggregate those.
I think Tony wants to say something, did you?
I just want to know what it takes to make the re-roofing for PV installation free.
Right, yeah, that was going to be my question, is that, if that's a policy question for us.
That's the direction from the council.
Because it seems, it does seem like we should incentivize and, and not put up roadblocks, especially cost roadblocks to people putting in solar.
Right. And people that are, people that are putting in solar, I mean, there's a lot of my neighbors that have, their homes are built in the mid 90s or late 90s, and so you have this concrete roof, and you're going to put in solar. I'm going to hire a roofer likely, because if I'm going to take off like, you know, several hundred square feet of my roof, I mean, it just makes sense, you're going to hire a roofer to take those, that off. And then if it's like 20, 30 years old, and you only have 10, 15, 20 years left on the life, and I have a, I'm installing a product that has 20-year or 30-year life, I'm going to basically re-roof my house. So while it's, it, it's, it's part and parcel of the, the whole kind of job of installing PV. So I think we should think about, not only in this instance, but in other instances where we're basically asking somebody to install energy efficient, clean energy kind of devices like this, that we're thinking holistically of how we can actually help them more easily install it and not penalize them to do that. And I think here in this situation, it's going to be most, in most instances, unless it's brand new construction, it's going to be a whole roof, and they're going to hire a roofer to do that.
If that's the direction from the council, you know.
If I may, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So moving forward, what I'm hearing from the council is to incentivize any permit that is necessary or incidental to facilitate the provision or in order for them to provide solar. So moving forward, as our building official stated, that all those permits are already being streamlined. So it's already part of the streamlining process. The, the difficulty that we're, we're running into right now is the, the fee issue. Because of the policy, the current policy only waive the, the permits just for solar installation and for EV installation. Any associated permits are not included in that policy. So if the direction tonight from the council is to waive all fees associated or for permits, other permits associated with the installation of energy efficient equipments, then we can bring something back to the council to formalize that, to waive the fees. For example, the re-roofing, if it's associated with the installation of.
If I could add a footnote to that, that very often associated with that, there is also EV chargers that are being put in the garages and the, the battery packs that are being installed on the wall. So that requires technically four permits, but if this council wants to pay for all of it, for the city to pay for all of it, well, you know, that could be a direction to us and, and we can act on it.
I think we should definitely do that.
Well, and, you know, obviously, coming back as an agenda item with the fiscal impacts would be useful, but I'm just looking to, you know, say, hey, have at it, we want this stuff. And, you know, there may be electrical panels that may be upgraded. There's a lot of things that are associated with this work that we don't want to be nickel and diming people that want to do this. And so, you know, streamlining and lowering the cost, it's, we, you know, to me, this is the thing that we want to be subsidizing. People are doing the right thing.
Right, and also if, if it helps, and make sure you address this when it comes back to us, if it helps that you don't have to have two different permit numbers because one has a fee and the other one doesn't, and sometimes that results in two different people reviewing the same permit, you know, those are streamlining benefits too, because it all just goes under one with one person and it can go faster. So, yeah, that's great. Okay, so good, we'll, we'll look forward to that coming back to us. And then the second thing, I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Krantz's point about when you're going, pulling in to get, go to Supercuts or get a bagel, you're not going to be charging your car in that 15, 30 minute time. So are people who have electric cars, because that actually is the type of store that is in that Mountain Vista and El Camino Real commercial space. If somebody has an EV, can they pull into that spot and not be charging, but they can still just park there? So it's sort of like an incentive in terms of having a parking spot that's closer?
They really shouldn't.
They really shouldn't be because if someone behind them that did want to charge wanted to charge, and there's someone sitting there not charging, then it would be unavailable to that second person. So that's the the best practice is to not be parking there if you're not charging. So, yeah, I guess that would be my.
But currently, there is no language in the billing code that actually authorizes us to put any signage to tell people that, you know, that that you be told, for example, like for for accessible parking spaces, there is such law, and and those signs are posted, but for EV charging, we'll have to adopt basically language that would authorize us to do that.
Well, I'm not really interested in that. I'm not interested in towing electric vehicles. I mean, what I'm what I'm interested in is substantive policy, not virtue signaling. So just requiring that we put in EV charging that nobody is using, and our and if we are witnessing this in our city, this is the first one, but I think there would be a way to start distinguishing between types of commercial buildings, like Councilmember Kranz was saying, the office buildings where he parks for eight hours would be where he would charge, but not when you run in to get a bagel. So so having some ongoing analysis of whether this is working for us, and if there's a better way, just like this code cleanup, to address how, you know, how to allow our businesses to thrive with parking spots that are actually available for people to park in, I I think that's that's what I'm really getting at.
Yeah, and I just might share that we are actually in under development with an EV charging station master plan for the city, and a lot of these questions that you're bringing up are being evaluated by a professional consultant as part of that process. So that would be a really great opportunity for council and for our environmental commission to weigh in on some of these very specific questions and and challenges with adopting EV charging and and implementing it in our city.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I would just encourage us to really look at whether they're being used in these places at all, because if they really are sitting there almost completely empty almost all the time, then, you know, we know that's not working out in a great way. So we might be able to expand the parking abilities with signage or something. So, okay, those are my final comments. Deputy Mayor, did you want to make any other additional comments?
Yeah, just real fast, a final comment, which is that I didn't know about the master plan, and I think that that's an excellent vehicle for having this conversation, but I'd also ask that that in the future, too, when the insinuate us when the El Camino Real specific plan comes back, that we're we're basically we're bringing in that master plan into that conversation and being thoughtful, as as Councilmember Kranz was talking about, being thoughtful about where we're actually putting some of the EV charging stations, because we have a tremendous amount of different uses along ECR, and we want to be, you know, there's going to be certain places where it makes a whole lot of sense because there are people there working and they're, you know, medical facilities, and they're working there all day, and other other places where we're certainly kind of, you know, somebody in a parking stall for five minutes is 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 kind of the the average or 10 minutes is what the norm is, and so we want to kind of respect that, especially on that corridor.
Okay, yeah.
Would you consider, should we amend the motion to include the conversation, you know, the the changes to the fees and the permitting?
Yes, we should do that.
Anything related to photovoltaic and power walls and, you know, all these asundary issues that may be part of that.
Yeah, do you I mean, so I think you were you were going to bring it back, but we just make it part of the motion that you would bring it back. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Yes, that's acceptable.
That's part of the motion? So the motion is that to introduce the ordinances as presented, and then what I had was and direction to staff to bring back policy options for streamlining and incentivizing energy efficient equipment.
Yeah, and and fee removal.
Fee waiver.
I think it's associated with permitting.
Yeah, fee waiver associated with permitting.
That's that sounds right.
Okay.
And that's specifically for five items, is for PV, for re-roofing, for battery pack, for EV charging station in the home, as well as the panel upgrade, those five, correct?
I think those are the five that we've talked about, but if you're able to identify any other energy efficiency, any other anything else that would further our climate action plan goals, I think that we should be looking at that as well.
Do we need to bring a fiscal impact?
Yes, we will bring back the item, a comprehensive look at all energy efficient permits and explore all the associated permits with those types of permits, and then we'll bring a comprehensive list for the council to consider, and then we'll bring a fiscal impact analysis as well for all those those permits.
And I would challenge the planning department to come up, come back with many more recommendations for incentivizing the installation of anything that electrifies more. So I will.
Challenge accepted.
$25 to a Starbucks card or whatever it takes to get them get them fired up over there.
Okay, perfect.
Great.
So we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously, takes us to item, oh, and I we should note that there were no speakers on item 10A, it was a public hearing, and there were no speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you for noting that. And then we'll move to item 10B, which is intersection control. Thank you very much, staff, for item 10A, we appreciate your help. And we'll move to 10B, which is intersection control at the intersection of Eolus Avenue, Andrew Avenue, and Hillcrest Drive. And how many public speakers do we have on this? Three? Okay.
So Traffic Engineer Bandigan, whenever you're ready, you may start.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of public. We're back here, we were here about two or three times during 2020 and 2021 about this intersection, Eolus Avenue, Andrew Avenue, and Hillcrest Drive. A little bit of background to refresh our minds, there were staff received some community concerns with regards to, oops, sorry, with regards to intersection control at this three-legged intersection, Y-shaped, north of Lucadia, south of Sheraton, about on clarity, ambiguity, about right of way, about turning movements and maneuvers and sight distance, concerns of safety. Staff evaluated this intersection on two different occasions during 2020, collected volume, speed, sight distance, turning maneuver counts, and our evaluations showed that an always stop control was warranted at that location. The always stop control was approved by Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission, formerly Traffic Commission, and City Council afterwards, within a month or two, adopted the ordinance associated with that stop sign, second reading of the ordinance. While the staff was processing installation of those stop signs, the City Council received additional feedback and input from the residents that were concerned with the aesthetics of those stop signs and how it might impact the neighborhood. City Council at that point directed staff to reevaluate and bring more options to the City Council. Among the options that were presented later on, in February 2021, a quick build neighborhood circle was voted for by council as a pilot project. Construction completed in October. During the motion, staff was directed to come back to council within six months or a year to report back on the operation of the circle. We conducted our evaluations in August and September. One minor additional improvement was implemented in September, which I'll present to council, and today we're here basically fulfilling that promise to council to report back on the operation. These are some of the options that were originally presented. This is the neighborhood circle slash mini roundabout. That was actually the selection of council. This was another option that at that point was presented, basically just a striping, converting it to a more traditional T-shaped, three-legged intersection, a 90-degree angled, basically Eolus will go straight, but Andrew would come at a turn. Another option was the approved always stop control, which later on the ordinance was rescinded by council. This is the original project that we implemented, a quick build project was done, I think, in less than four, five months, ordering the stuff and implementing the striping plan. Additional signage was added, cost was less than, I think, $15,000 total. This was our effectiveness survey that we did in August of this year. As you can see, the upper table shows the daily traffic approaching the roundabout, the mini roundabout, the circle at different three legs of the intersection, and the speeds approaching. As you can see, the volumes, Hillcrest is about 200, Andrew 480, Eolus 600. The approach's speed is 24, 24, and 28, which shows that, excuse me, shows that approaching the neighborhood circle, the speed is within the speed limit, obviously with the exception of 28, which was not the case previously. Now we are showing that people are approaching the circle, are lowering the speed in advance. And then the bottom table is vehicles exiting the intersection, exiting the roundabout, the mini roundabout at a similarly lower speed, 23, 25, and 25, which shows that neighborhood circle is working effectively in lowering the speed limit. We did conduct, as a part of our survey, a count of how many people go into the wrong direction, going back to the shape of the circle. As you can see, because of the diameter of the circle, it is possible for vehicles, if they intentionally want to, to go in the opposite direction and shorten their path, basically not using the circle and just going to the wrong direction in the opposing traffic. But considering the low volume of traffic, it is possible. Our surveys showed that originally during a 24-hour period, we had around 29, close to 30 vehicles doing this wrong maneuver, which was a very, very low percentage. And in order to resolve that, we added flexible posts in advance of the approaches to the circle to prevent or reduce this wrong term maneuver. These additional flexible posts were added in September that would try to prevent people from making those wrong term maneuvers, basically forcing them to stay in the path that we want. And as you can see, the 29 vehicles went down to seven. We have some additional options. Again, these are just additional options that we're presenting to council. We're not recommending at this point any any additional options because of the fact that our direction from council last year was do this project as a pilot. There was no mention in the minutes as this being a temporary project or a short-term project. It was mentioned in the minute that this was a pilot project, no mention of this being removed or modified in any way. So there's no funding associated with any additional improvements. These four options that we have right now, one obviously is to keep it as is scenario, the fact that it's effective and we know it's working. Second option is keep the circle, but since we have received some comments and feedback from the neighborhood that they have concerns with the aesthetics of these new additional ballers that were added to prevent this wrong term maneuver, we can remove those because they were really low percent, I think they were like 3% to 4% or something, even without those ballers. So the number was maybe even less, maybe I'm wrong. It was it was a very it was mentioned in the report, I don't exactly remember the exact percentage of the wrong turns, but it was very low. Yeah, I think 1.5%. And but we can remove them because it's very, very small. For 1%, we can help the aesthetics of the neighborhood. A third option would be to remove this if it's really not pleasing to the neighborhood, and if it's the direction of council, and go back to the always stop control that was warranted and approved at some point by council, as mentioned later rescinded, but it is warranted. And the last option is pending, obviously, funding availability and addition of this option to our fiscal year budget and our future work plan, we can reevaluate this and find additional improvements and basically change the look of this and come back at a later stage to council with potential additional improvements and reshaping this neighborhood circle. Thank you. With that, I'm open to additional, if any, questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to council, let's hear from the three speakers.
The three speakers are Derek Shawkwa, Rob Fleener, and then June Honsberger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, staff. Thanks for taking the time to listen to me tonight. My name's Derek Shawkwa. I live at 492 Andrew Avenue, which is right on the circle. And I wanted to bring up a couple points. First of all, the reason I'm in opposition to the circle is because it's dangerous. In the 24 years that we've lived there, we've never seen an accident. Joan, who lives across the street from us, in her 47 years, has never seen an accident. And now that the circle's been put in, it's traffic chaos. Some people who don't live with front row seats like we have might go through this intersection once a day and thinks it's functioning nicely, but it's not. We've seen USPS take sharp turns and end up in the neighbor's yard. The trucks trash trucks can't make the circle, so they go through the middle, they get their axles caught in the in the posts. We've seen bumpers fall off of cars that have collided with the circle and the posts, and I've seen strollers and moms almost hit by people going around the the circle. So the traffic used to flow beautifully on the street. I kind of think we're fixing a problem that wasn't there just because we see it. And now we witness traffic chaos all day long, horns going off, as I said, near misses, bumpers falling off. This was a pilot program, and when we met with staff, all the neighborhood thought, hey, let's try this and see how it works, and then let's come back and talk about its success or its failure. And since it's been put in, we haven't had the opportunity to discuss what we've seen. And for people that, you know, staff has put a camera in there for six hours at a time, and they have a small snapshot into what's actually happening there. But when you live right in the area, you see, you see it during the day and you hear it at night. At night, we can hear people bouncing off of the structures. And, you know, we have this intersection that on paper looks like it's three streets intersecting, but in reality, you have a thoroughfare with one street coming on it. So I think there's a lot better solutions than what we have now, and I would hope that we could get back together with staff and discuss some of those other options, because what we have now is dangerous. We're going to see a major accident very soon, I'm positive of that, and it's just not working. So those are my comments, and I appreciate you guys listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council, having lived at Hillcrest Drive for the last 44 years and driven through the intersection countless times daily, I do think the traffic circle is working, and it seems to be the right solution. It has worked to slow the traffic and clarify the right of way for drivers who understand the rules of a traffic circle. However, the way it looks right now with nothing permanent makes it rather confusing to some drivers. When it was suggested by the Traffic Commission, it was with the understanding that if it worked, it would be completed to fit in with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. The way it is now, it truly is an eyesore. Please approve the circle, but please finish it, similar to those small circles in Cardiff. If you can't find the monies for this, then remove it and give us the four the three-way stop signs which were approved for the intersection two years ago. Don't let a few neighbors' complaints jeopardize the safety of our intersection. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm June Honsberger. I live in Lucadia, and I agree with Rob. I think that the traffic circle is also working amazingly well. It has slowed traffic, as we saw from the report, and I feel much safer whenever I am approaching that intersection in a car or on foot. So I I agree, I think this intersection did need something, and lots of neighbors asked not for that initial stop sign control, and I I feel like the council and city staff worked really hard to come up with this quick build solution, which I really appreciate, and I was glad it was piloted in our neighborhood. And I know that it has been piloted, I think, in a couple other places now, and I I think it's a great solution. I am also here, much like Rob, to just ask that, if possible, could we please beautify it? You know, I'm I realize everything seems to cost so much money these days, but even, you know, just to put a tree in the. money these days, but even, you know, just to put a tree in the middle and some bricks around the edge, and, you know, I know that that's pie in the sky, because it always seems like we have to also include drainage and everything else that goes along with it. But I do respectfully ask that, if possible, could we get this on the next cycle to be at least beautified as much as possible? And also, since we are talking about traffic circles and roundabouts, I just can't help myself, but I am also here to ask, can we please ask city staff to try and take the design that the city has so beautifully done of the Hygiea roundabout, and please try to get grant funding for that? It is a safe routes to school. It would really enhance traffic flow in and out of Lucadia. We really are backing up on both of our thoroughfares. And if we could, you know, did the same thing that we did with the Verde Crossing, we have the design, and it is a shovel-ready project. So I just ask that we put our wonderful staff and get them to focus on at least getting a grant for that, because, again, it is a safe route to school. It's our way in and out. And I, I feel like Lucadia has lost out on quite a few traffic circles that were in the works, and then they got pulled, the one at La Costa and the hotel on the 101. We were supposed to have a beautiful traffic circle that was going to help traffic flow, and that got pulled with the design. And we also lost the Bishop Gate one that was supposed to be right in Streetscape. So I know there were some snafus with Bishop Gate, and I know staff worked hard to make that happen. But anyway, thank you. If we could make these two happen for Lucadia, it would be much appreciated. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
I'll conclude speakers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the public speakers tonight. Councilmember Cranz.
Yes, thank you. And looking at the timeline, it reminds me of the unfortunate process this whole thing went to, you know, the approvals of the stop signs, and then the neighbors, you know, learning about the installation of the stop signs when we put up a sign that said, "Traffic patterns will be changing." So, you know, I did my best to advocate for the neighbors, and I think that the solution that staff came up with is, is very good. But I will say that I'll be more careful when we make motions in the future if I know they're going to come back and, and be thrown in our face to say, oh, well, you get those ugly candlesticks because you didn't say that we might change them out. I would say that a pilot program infers that we're going to come back and review and talk a little bit about how we might be able to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing, and, and perhaps we've learned some lessons about how we can make it work better as well. And I think when you look at the pictures of the, of the striping, one of the things I have learned over the last couple of years is that when it comes to automobiles and changing the patterns of drivers, paint is not the most effective tool, because people will gladly just drive right over your markings on the street. I see that at Sunset Drive off of Vulcan. We've painted to try and get people to bend a little bit on that, on that right turn there, and hell, they just drive over that paint like it was never put in there. I think it's the same thing in this situation, where we painted some lines to kind of direct people to, you know, use the circle effectively, and they just ignore that. So I think that there is a reason that roundabouts on the approaches, the aprons have raised surfaces so that people would pay a price on their car if they drove right over that. So I know the City of San Diego is installing a quick-build roundabout, and there are now some quick-build processes that we could use to replace the paint that redirects traffic, using the elevated, create a real apron, create an impediment. All of our roundabouts have something in the middle, big planters. The Hermes planter has the most feeble tree that I've ever seen. It reminds me of Charlie Brown Christmas and his Christmas tree. In fifteen years, we haven't been able to make that grow, but the idea is that you, you redirect people and you get their attention by putting something in the middle of the intersection. The candlesticks don't work very well, and they're ugly. So it is my hope that we can, as a council, agree to, you know, direct staff to come up with some alternatives, whether it's the quick-build circles that actually create a raised surface. There, perhaps there are planters that we could put in the middle there, and maybe somewhere or another, create a raised surface. The approaches, maybe we can raise those. There has to be something that we can do that is cost-effective, that would make this more aesthetically pleasing and much more permanent. So it's my hope, and I would move, frankly, that we direct staff to come back with some options to make this more permanent. I would also add that there was a neighbor that offered to pay for planters to put in there that make it much more pretty. I haven't reached out to him, and I basically told him that this is a pilot program, and we may be able to put in a planter once we've recognized that it is working. And so here we are. And as a pilot program, I think that the next step is to address the issues of aesthetics. We can get to, at some point, the question about whether drivers can ever learn to properly use the circle. I have seen enough tire marks on the roundabouts on Lucadia Boulevard that I know that it's not going to ever be 100%. But ultimately, June is right. The speeds on the table say we've slowed down traffic, which I think was the ultimate goal. So I've made a motion to direct staff to bring back some alternatives and identify the costs for those alternatives so that we can get with the neighborhood and, and make it better.
I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Henze?
I'm supportive of this direction, too. I just want to get a little clarity, and perhaps it's from our city manager, as to how that process would work. So we're talking about $30,000 of design just before even construction occurs. Would that design come to us in our next budget consideration in the spring to authorize that, or would we be talking about something sooner?
Yeah, I think that there's, and I'm not sure if I'm interpreting Councilmember Cranz's motion correctly, but it's a good question. So the alternate to do a design and make something more permanent would come back during the CIP budget discussion. We've pretty much expended the quick-build in terms of projects that you guys all identified during this year's. I also was hoping that Abe and Jill could also talk a little bit about trees in the middle. I'm, I'm not sure if you can put trees, trees in the middle or, or what that does in terms of some of the other aspects. So what I want to make sure is that if you hear the motion, that you are comfortable with what it is that you can bring back beyond the three items.
I mean, I'd like us to have a little more conversation here, because I have things to say, and I want to hear some more depth before we start getting deeply into this motion. So, so let's, if you don't mind just holding off on commenting on that, and can you continue with your comments, Councilmember Henze?
Yes. Thank you. So I do want to commend staff, because we have been asking for quick-build projects, and particularly ones that would be a pilot or a demo to show us if something works before we invest that half a million dollars into the construction of it. So I, I think this is a lesson, and it's telling us that I'm, that it's a good thing. We're getting feedback from the community. We're learning that we can do something in a matter of months instead of ten years and wait on a roundabout that, you know, it might not ever get built. So I, I want to say I really like this direction. I like that you implemented it. I like that we refined the stop sign, because that was not acceptable to the community. I am disappointed to hear from the closest neighbor that there have been a more occurrence of disturbance, including honking of horns and this and that. So I'm curious to know, Abe, if, if it sounded like the Edco trucks can't maneuver it well, and sometimes some of the bigger mail trucks can't maneuver it well. Do you think that we could make the diameter smaller, and it would be a little easier for them, without compromising the results we've achieved with speed reduction?
Good question, Councilmember. The shorter we make, the smaller we make the diameter, the easier it would make for vehicles to turn around it, and will get less of that traffic calming effect that we are after. When we designed this, it does allow Edco trucks to go around it at around 15 miles an hour. So if a vehicle has a hard time going around and it has to go over these little stops, they're probably going over. We do have advisory speed limits in advance. We can add some additional or maybe around it. I mean, it would be more striping or more pavement marking on the ground, which I know the neighborhood, you know, doesn't necessarily prefer. But it is designed in a way, I mean, large trucks, like construction, or if, if there is like a truck larger than a UPS truck or a Edco truck, they might not be able to go around it. But we did template, we did design the turn so that those vehicles at lower speeds are able to go. They don't need to do a three-point turn in any way.
Okay, so you think that-
Unless they're going fast.
You think that the diameter is appropriate for what we're trying to achieve?
We did template check it, yes. It should, it should suffice. I mean, and we did test it, too. Not with trucks as big as Edco's, but we did test it with some trucks when we marked it on the ground.
Okay, thank you. So I will say I am supportive. It sounds like, I think, most of the input we received from the neighbors was generally positive, except for that they wanted it to be permanent and look more beautiful. In the examples, some of the ones that we received photos in Cardiff of that traffic circle, I think the difference is that there weren't multiple streets that surround it. It was just to slow traffic down on a street that was just wide. And so I think that there are some different considerations, including like, we probably can't put a tree or something that would obscure any of the ability of the sightlines to see across. But I think there's probably something that we can design that wouldn't be really expensive, but would be a permanent improvement on what we have. So that's what I would like to see come back to us.
Yeah, kind of responding to your last statement, and similar to what Councilmember Cranz mentioned, what I'm hearing, and to respond to our city manager, is not the permanent, permanent concrete landscape version, and correct me if I'm understanding wrong. What I heard was another quick-build that is a little bit of a better quick-build compared to what we did. That one, we can look into it. Then, we might have options, and we can come back. And as city manager mentioned, during our next budget season, we can, we might not need that big of a effort with regards to the whole design. We might not need to hire a consultant and do any kind of a complicated, sophisticated design. We can do another quick-build that is, I guess, a better quick-build, if that's the direction that council wants us to go. The numbers that were in the council report that would need a lot more work would be a, basically a concrete mini-roundabout with all the drainage work, with the soil, with the landscape, with, you know, irrigation, all that stuff that will come with it, with the maintenance. That would need its own design. That, what I would guess, would be at least a eighteen-month process. And that would obviously need its own budget for design, budget for construction, and the whole deal. So I guess I, we would need some clarification with regards to, like, the, the version that I heard Councilmember Cranz mentioned about the, the quick-build that's a little better than what we have. You cannot plant a tree in there. You can't bring a vase out there or put something in the middle of it.
Some planter, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, that's what, you know, we just don't want to keep designing roundabouts that are like $2 million, and we have to keep saying no to them, one that's been around for 10 years. So something that's in between, a beautiful little traffic circle, that we don't have to do extensive drainage and irrigation for, I think, is the goal.
Yeah, the, the beautiful adjective, that makes me a little uncomfortable, because that's really hard to, you know.
Can, can you put up the picture of the, of the circle?
What's out there right now?
Yeah, what's out there right now. Mm-hmm. So what we have right now is the plastic curbing that is identified with those candlesticks. And is there a way to maybe put more rows of plastic curbing with a, you know, we just put on Streetscape some big planters that have plants in the middle of them. And, you know, they, it, it, it would simulate, in a way, what we have at High Medicine Hermes in our roundabouts. But, because it identifies to people that you're supposed to, you know, go around this thing. But, you know, the candlesticks suck. They just look bad, and it really is an eyesore. And so what solutions are there that are not very expensive, that we might be able to come up with and, you know, eliminate the candlesticks? That's the biggest question. But you're right. You're putting candlesticks on the approach because people were driving over the paint. They didn't care. And, you know, what do we have? Can we get some of this quick-build? You know, I've seen pictures of it. I, I wish I had brought the PDF. San Diego's got a PDF. I sent it to Jill. It's, you know, you bolted into the ground.
Correct.
And, you know, that, I think, would address some of the problems that we're having with the approaches and eliminate the need for the candlesticks, which are ugly. And I think that, you know, Edco and other trucks that are having problems, the aprons of the roundabouts are designed to allow trucks to hop the apron. But if you've got the candlesticks there and they have to back up, they're busting up the candlesticks and screwing up their trucks, and, you know, it's just creating a little bit more of a headache. And I don't know if this is the traffic engineer, you know, quick-build roundabout, and you're supposed to put candlesticks, and that's the way it's got to be, but that, to me, is ugly, and I hope we can get away from it. And I under, I agree with Kelly. It's great to be able to approve this. It slowed people down, but now we got to work on the beauty. And I, I know you don't, you're, that, that's a challenging word, because beauty's in the eye of the beholder. I get that. And I, I'm relatively certain that there will be some in the neighborhood, no matter what we do, will say it's still ugly, but...
Well, so can we have other people comment, too? So I know you've, you've commented twice now, and we're getting really deeply into redesigning this. And I'd like to hear from the others. I'm sure they want to speak, and I would like to offer my comments as well. So I'm going to proceed with the list here, which is Councilmember Lyons.
So I love quick-build, and I love roundabouts, so I'm really happy to see that we're evolving in our thoughts on them. So this is wonderful. I'm glad we characterized it as a pilot project, because I think that acknowledges that we were trying it and seeing what the feedback is. So being a landscape architect, ideal in beauty and function, a lot. So it calls me immediately that in the center area, we do need something that's more three-dimensional. This, the solution on a quick-build and a roundabout, probably if we, if we establish some standards in our own heads, that it's more than just the ground plane striping. It's, needs to be more three-dimensional, have a vertical presence. So the idea of a pot or even bringing in some soil to, and maybe some brick to change the material around the circle, really does help us achieve what we're trying to do. And then, thinking about how the traffic moves through here, and what we heard about how people are hitting the center circle, it call, what comes to me is that V-shaped area that you see here with the yellow striping before you see the yield sign. If there's a way to make, to take that asphalt out and make it something that's a rougher material, or something that designates, you don't drive here. You just drive where you're supposed to go and go to the right, instead of people kind of cross-cutting across that area to go straight through. But I think, I think this is a good step in the right direction. I like the feedback we're getting. This is a functional solution. We can, with the three-dimensional elements and the change in the ground plane, not just striping, but maybe do something different in the areas where we don't want the cars to drive anymore, will help communicate to the, to the trucks and the cars using this, what they're supposed to do. These are the rules in this area. So I appreciate that. And I, I did want to compliment, I believe what we're saying is generally, this has slowed the traffic. And I like that it's achieved that. And now, we can take this quick-build to the next step of achieving something that's more, also functional, but more, more aesthetic, too. So that's all I, let me see, double-check. That's all I had to say. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Moscow.
Councilmember Lyons, excellent comments. Really captured what I was going to say, which is, first and foremost, I just want to applaud staff for what they've done here, because I think every time we've talked about a roundabout, be it in any part of our city, it's always like $2 million, $2 million, $2 million. And what we've accomplished here is there are several-fold benefits for $15,000. And so I think that what we need to do is just kind of listen to the comments from the public and the, the comments from the city council, and just basically take it to the next level. Not a, you know, the $2 million roundabout, but, you know, because we don't have that money right now, but to a more permanent structure, permanent for the next 10, 15 years or so. That takes into consideration the aesthetics and the safety aspects that we've already heard about and the need for. And I think Councilmember Lyons is on to something in terms of, in terms of the, the, the kind of, the rough road. kind of, the rough road where you don't want people to go and also just the, the redesign of that roundabout, the, the circle there to make it kind of just a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. And, and perhaps you're talking about other ways to illuminate that. I know that there are dark sky, skies ordinance in Alevenheim and we've explored different ways of illuminating roundabouts that would not be harsh on a lot of the neighbors. And so, you know, if we didn't have those reflective candlesticks, ballards, then perhaps there's other ways of illuminating and, and that could also make it even actually aesthetically more pleasing too. So, so I think that you guys have done a great job in listening to the public and listening to council members. I think that, you know, coming back with some menu options for improvements is really what I think you should be doing in the future. And that, and, and so that's kind of what the motion is that's on the table, but I'm, I'm willing to kind of go with the flow and change the motion however the group wants to form that motion.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I want to make my comments now before we go back to Councilmember Crans. So to me, this is a really great example of what we're trying to accomplish at the policy level in the city of Encinitas. So, so when we say that we have Vision Zero goals, which involve having slower speeds on our streets and making it so that there are fewer accidents between bikes and pedestrians and cars, and we say that we don't, we know we don't have the money to build roundabouts and even to, to do all of Lucadia Streetscape, to do rail crossings of the railroad, to do the third roundabout on Lucadia Boulevard at Hygiea, you know, projects that have been in the queue for years and years because of money. But we want to do something with our streets and we talk so much about mobility, you know, I think we really need to send the strong message to staff, which I think we have with our comments, that these projects are good, that for $15,000 you can affect the way that the mobility on our streets happen. It doesn't have to be, it's not $2 million anymore, it's $5 million for roundabouts, you know. So, so the reality of that, of that cost just has to be really clear. And so to me, the function needs to work together with the aesthetics, but the function is most important because that's ultimately the safety. And ultimately, safety is the most important thing. So this has slowed speeds and I think there can also be, like, I just, I just want to mention my experience having done infrastructure projects in this city where there are people who respond negatively to certain things at first and even act defiantly, like, like they, they will drive across this or drive the wrong way across this because they're, they don't like it that it went in and they want to go in the most direct way. But over time, they will start using it the, the way, everybody will, not, you know, we showed the stats with a very small percentage, but 25 people going the wrong way using the, what did you call it? It was vehicle wrong maneuver. Is that what you called it? Yeah. And also like at the, at the Coastal Rail Trail, you know, a beautiful project in Cardiff that went in, we immediately received complaints about the fact that it wasn't manicured the way it had been done in Slana Beach, that it was just this wild weeds and it didn't look nice and it was, you know, what was wrong with the city and why didn't we do better? The aesthetics weren't good. And we, you know, we, we talked about that and, and whether we should try to put in landscaping and improve that. But now, you know, it's, it's keep it natural. It is what it is and it's a cost that we're not going back and changing that, that whole thing. And it's basically been accepted and, and it's desired in other parts of the city as well. So, you know, having candlesticks is, I feel like, is part of a quick build reality. So I think traffic things change over time and there will be new aesthetics and maybe there already are. And, and I'm going to, you know, lead into that of, of what are the next steps, but I really feel like we shouldn't shy away from using candlesticks. We have them on Highway 101 in our protected bike lane. We have them on Lucadia Boulevard. We have them in another, a number of small projects around the city that help direct where traffic goes. And so even though it might not be, you know, a beautiful planter in the middle, the reality is that those projects, I think, are just not going to get done. And if they do, if this one gets done for half a million dollars, those other projects like on Lucadia Boulevard don't get done. And so the ones in Cardiff, you know, that entire program was scrapped after those Cardiff, those Cardiff ones went in. And it was on Rubenstein and Summit and they took a long time. They cost $1 million, which more than 10 years ago was a lot of money. And neighbors were supposed to maintain the landscaping in the middle of those. And then over time, the neighbors complained about that. We don't want to have to go across the street to water this or, you know, nobody is trimming the trees when, when they're all falling and they're creating a lot of debris and, you know, it, it, the, this was before I was in office, but the city ended that neighborhood program because of the cost and the hassle of it. So to me, the question of, of can we look at this, which recognizing $15,000, which changed the function of this road for the better, can we move that up a little bit? And, and, you know, Joy mentioned these things, three-dimensional vertical presence, you know, there are functionality things like the trash trucks need to be able to potentially drive across this or, you know, obviously we don't want to create a situation where three-point turns are necessary. So, so is there a way for maybe Councilmember Crans and Councilmember Lines to get together and have a community meeting with, with the people who care deeply about the aesthetics and the people who want to donate for the planters to see, you know, what is it that we could do for a relatively low cost that still can accomplish the goals that the city has, which have to do with the mobility and an engineering side? But, you know, I, I don't support moving forward with this, especially tonight, without looking at every capital improvement project that would put us into the $500,000 roundabout, which was in the staff, staff report. I think that we need to stick to this, but, but say, is there a way for us to work together to have it be more acceptable aesthetically? And I, I hope that there is and I think there probably is, but, but I certainly wouldn't want to undermine the reality that this is 100% in line with a lot of our city goals. And we really, I, I hope we don't send a mixed message to staff about what we want because there's a lot of different community feedback. And I, you know, there's a lot of different community feedback just from the three people who spoke tonight. But then the emails we received and the reality that this has been an ongoing project for, for now, many years of community feedback. But we also saw, you know, there are 500 people coming in from one of those roads from that, that chart and none of those people are here tonight either. You know, people, a lot of people are using this very successfully every day. And so I want to recognize that I think, I think this is largely a very successful project. So, you know, so my, my hope and that we could modify the, the motion to say that there could be a community group that could meet to say, what can we do for this low cost and to not have it be too much of a staff burden, but to have the community involved in the solutions and not just have it be us sending it back to staff for more engineering solutions and, and to come up with something that might work for everybody. And if, and that the costs though be considered as part of the budgeting. I mean, in consideration with the other priorities that the city has. And, and, I mean, I do hope that we can move forward with the Lucadia Boulevard roundabout as a top priority roundabout. I mean, the thousands of cars that go on Lucadia Boulevard by Hygiea and the backup at, because there's a stop sign there, you know, that is a really high-level urgent problem, which has maintained itself in that position for too long. So, so, you know, that would be my, my suggestion to my colleagues, if you were open to it, that we form that committee of the two of you to help come up with solutions together with the community. So let me, let me call on you again, Councilmember Crans.
Yes, so I don't disagree with much other than the fact that we need to be really clear that if, if candlesticks are the solution, when we say quick build and candlesticks are going to pop up in your neighborhood, I, I think that's unacceptable and I think that most people would find it to be as well. Especially in an environment where, as was mentioned, there weren't any accidents to begin with. I agree, we need to slow down traffic. People are walking in that area and there were people flying through there. And I think that we have effectively proven that this is a route to getting people to slow down. But as was pointed out, and in fact, the, the report still shows that there were seven people that drove the wrong way on the street. And if you want to have a Vision Zero program and you've got cars coming directly at each other, it's likely you're not going to have a zero there anymore. So if we have a situation where we still have people are driving over the paint or bypassing the candlesticks, that's not good. And, you know, so while I certainly agree that quick build should be used as a tool to prove that something can be done, that doesn't necessarily mean that we should be declaring the work done, that we should consider the aesthetics. We have a beautiful community and, you know, in these neighborhoods where you're, you talked about Highway 101 and Lucadia Boulevard, we do have ballards. We don't have them in most neighborhoods. So it would be my goal to prove something with a system like this and then figure out how we can very cost-effectively make some more permanent improvements in order to accomplish what was accomplished by the candlesticks.
So is that a yes to being on the committee?
Well, I'm perfectly willing. I, I met with these folks in their neighborhood right there and that's how we brought it forward. And, you know, I'm, I'm all for it, but, you know, I didn't want to call a meeting and then get here and find out that, you know, there wasn't any support for whatever it was I was going to talk about. So I asked that this come back like we had promised as part of the pilot approval. And so here we're having this conversation and I'm more than happy to speak with the neighbors, some of whom have sent me other emails that said, hey, when is this going to get better looking?
Well, yeah, I mean, my idea or my suggestion is not that you go meet with the neighbors. It's that we have an actual formalized committee discussion where staff is there, both of you are there, she's the landscape architect, you invite the community. Yeah, so it's not just you going off and, you know, and, and that it be grounded in a cost reality. So, you know, that's, and, and the traffic realities of what we need, how we need this to function. So if you can or can't have a planter, you know, that's something they need to weigh in on.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Henze.
So just for my own edification, I'm curious to know, what's the, is it a threshold for average daily trips, which would allow us to do a quick build roundabout like this in this neighborhood, but not on Lucadia Boulevard and, and Hygiea?
Not that enough, Councilmember.
Say again?
Not that enough, no. There are versions, as Councilmember Crans mentioned, there are versions of these prefab manufactured roundabouts that are being utilized around the city. Caltrans is doing a lot of those. It's not about the size or volume of traffic. They function perfectly normal. They're just not very beautiful.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And just to add to that, we have submitted one grant application this year already for the Hygiea roundabout and we're preparing a second grant application that we will bring forward to city council for approval later this month.
Are those both state ATP grants?
One is.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lines?
That's great information. Thanks for that. Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in since it was recommended I might join the committee and I'm happy to do that. And I just, I also want to weigh in on candlesticks. I think that they work really well in some situations. I am not a traffic engineer, so I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to say anything other than my own opinion, but in a situation like this, especially when there's no nighttime lighting, because they're not linear, like if they're just linear and they keep you in your lane, then you kind of understand them. But what, but they're not linear here. So at night, it becomes almost a sea of reflectors that I could see might be hard to navigate. It's, I don't know if, I've been in things like that before and maybe it's just me, but I don't think it is. These candlesticks are a little bit difficult when they're not just a linear keep in your lane. I think it's hard sometimes for people to understand, where do I go? Where do I go? And so that's how I feel about them. So I think there's a place and time for, for the candlesticks. But I'm happy to help with other devices, other ways that we can achieve this quick build in these roundabouts. I think that would be a, a nice conversation to explore with interested neighbors.
Okay, great. So do we, do you mind modifying the motion to say that we will form, the council moves that we form a subcommittee of Councilmember Crans and Lines to meet with the community to discuss aesthetic improvements, aesthetic options for this roundabout? Okay. Did you get that, city clerk? Okay, I see there are no other comments, so do you want to read it back?
Yeah, so I have to approve the formation of a subcommittee consisting of council members, Lines, Crans and Lines to work with the community and staff.
Yes.
To work with the community and staff to develop aesthetic options for the circle.
Right.
Excuse me to clarify, we're coming back to council because this is not funded.
Right. I mean, you couldn't approve any actual improvements, but you would have the meeting, that's probably within the current budget, they could have the meeting, right, to discuss it? And then you would come back to the council to get any approval for funding? And it could be as part of the budget process or, or outside of that if the city manager wanted to?
Understood.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion does carry unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the public who came for this item. You didn't get to speak, I'm sorry. Okay, we're on to the final item tonight, which is a proposal for an Encinitas Academy, Academy. So we will turn it over for the Director of Information Contreras to take this item.
If I could, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to, a couple of you have asked, why is it that the information technology director would be telling you about the Encinitas Academy? And I just wanted to let you know that we have a multi-disciplined group of volunteers from each of the departments that are working and Jessica volunteered to be the chairperson. So that's why she's here.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council for having us here tonight to share with you our progress on developing the Encinitas Academy based on your recommendations from previous sessions for strategic planning. My name is Jessica Capreras. I am the IT Director and I am here tonight joined by you, Balda Raboni, who will be providing some translating services as well as some of the other team members from our committee. The Encinitas Academy is being developed as a community-based academy to share information about public services in an inclusive and interactive environment.
Una academia comunitaria para compartir información sobre los servicios públicos en un entorno inclusivo e interactivo.
The purpose of the academy is to encourage residents and business owners alike to be local government and community partners.
Alentar a los residentes y empresas a ser socios del gobierno local y de la comunidad.
Participants in the academy will meet each session with a different city leader where they will obtain a comprehensive overview of the functions and services provided by the city. They will be visiting city facilities, most importantly, to see how decisions are made and funds are allocated. Similarly, they will receive and participate in hands-on labs to learn how to interact with the city both online and in person. Ultimately, the goal is to encourage participants to get involved in city service and activities to make, that make Encinitas the amazing place that we all love and enjoy. Encinitas, day in and day out, is run through coordinated efforts from departments that facilitate operations within the community. To start with, we have the policy and administration divisions and teams that are foundational to governmental decision-making. They provide information that we discuss in meetings like our public meeting this evening. We also will be touching on public safety and information technology, which serve the community 24 hours every day of the week, every day of the year. We will also be looking at development services that provide both community planning and they facilitate safe, sustainable development within the community as well as enforce municipal codes. Engineering and finance will be a part of the academy to share how capital improvements are funded, designed and implemented. Parks and Recreation will also be on hand along with the Encinitas Community Library and Cultural Arts to share how they really improve the quality of life within the community through their efforts, both to facilitate the construction and maintenance of the amenities that we enjoy as well as coordinating events around the city. Finally, Public Works Utilities in the Sandeguita Water District that provide things that we rely on every day, from roads to water, will be sharing how they do their job on a day-to-day basis. basis. We've created an overview video so you can get a glimpse of what the Encinitas Academy has to offer. And Kieran Parha, our multimedia analyst, will share this.
From having warm sandy shores and award-winning parks to being a community that takes pride in local business and artists, it's easy to see what makes Encinitas special. Here in the city, and more specifically, your city government, we are driven to provide public service to everyone in Encinitas. We want to provide top-notch service to everyone in our great city. And to do this, we want to engage the community in how to best utilize our local government. Our solution is Encinitas Academy, a community-based academy to share information about public services in an inclusive and interactive environment. The academy will be conducted through the perspective of residents and business owners, showing which services impact facets of daily life. Here's a quick look at how city services impact our everyday lives. When using power in your home, Encinitans are opted into 100% green energy from San Diego Community Power from Mayor and Council's action. Water from your faucets provided by the San De Gito Water District, which is a part of the city's utility department. Sustainability is a constant focus of the city. Food waste in your organic spend is turned into natural gas from the city's partnership with Edco. The Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Department maintains our trails, parks and beaches that are enjoyed every day, while the Fire and Marine Safety Divisions work hard towards safety in our city. The Encinitas Academy will give an inside look at how Encinitas government operates, the functions of each department, how city operations intersect with our daily lives, how decisions are made at City Hall, why local government is important, and how to get involved. Encinitas Academy is focused on more than simply offering information to the public. Residents and business owners share unique perspectives that we can benefit from and use to adapt and improve the services we provide to the Encinitas community. The Encinitas Academy will be held in person around Encinitas, offering a series of in-person workshops and sessions. We are committed to preserving Encinitas values and encourage everyone to apply.
We've developed a framework to ensure that the Encinitas Academy isn't static but is rather dynamic, formed through continuous process improvement based on feedback from the academy participants. And that's what you see before you. Our next step in this process is actually to have people register and start the academy. The academy is free to all residents and business owners over the age of 18. We will have two academies, one in the spring and one in the fall, each consisting of six sessions with approximately three hours dedicated per session. We know that a lot of people might want to be involved that can't attend the academy in person, so we are going to be developing both web and multimedia content to reach both youth, seniors, and others that might not be able to attend. Through this, we will also be conducting community outreach at public events, as well as working alongside the school districts and through the library system to ensure that we're getting the information from the academy to as many people as possible in a way that facilitates and supports Encinitas values. The estimated supply budget is $5,000 per academy, which will be used to develop materials both printed and multimedia, as well as provide different items to be used during the training sessions. Funding for the academy in the spring is allocated in the current budget. All of us here today that have worked on innovating this academy are really looking forward to sharing what we do on a day-to-day basis to facilitate the life within Encinitas through local government. We invite all residents and business owners to apply, starting in January, on a first-come, first-served basis, with the academy occurring in spring. It will be our first of many academies. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate that presentation and the video. It looks like a really good effort and start, and that this will be very successful. So I appreciate the hard work from the team to put this together. I think, you know, one of my goals in creating an Encinitas Academy is to build confidence in the city. I think we do a lot of great things here at the city, and it can be hard for the public to see that, all the good work that's done, because a lot of times residents are interacting with the city when they're trying to do something like get a permit, or they're complaining about something, or something's not happening fast enough. And so to actually understand the functioning of a city, you have to run for office or be on a commission. And so this is another way for, for our residents to be involved in the city that is more engaged than just, you know, commenting at one of our outreach events. So, so I hope that, you know, we take that. It's important to me that we not focus too much on sort of a marketing aspect, like, you know, this is a beautiful place, and we have all these great amenities, and we want to have a one-way, like, direction of information towards you about how great Encinitas is, that it, it's, you know, more focused on the organization of the city and the different departments and what they do. And I also think it's a great opportunity for people who might be thinking about running for council or running for a commission, applying for a commission, to have more insight into that. And so, you know, it provides that avenue to understand things better. And I'll just say also that one of the former council members, Teresa Barth, put together a series of workshops that took residents around to the water district and a lot of the different wastewater district, a lot of the different things, for a while after she was off of council, in, in an effort to create this, this, on the, on the private side, you know, just to organize it as a citizen. But, but having it organized by the city, I think it's going to be much more effective. And also, I mean, it was great, and there were a lot of people who attended hers, but, you know, she stopped doing it after a while. And also, we see that our neighbor Carlsbad has something similar to this. And so, you know, recognizing the value of that in building citizenship and, and confidence in the city is really important. So, so thank you for putting it together, and I look forward to it being very successful. So let me call my colleagues, Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you. I know this is just an informational item, but it's our opportunity to give you some input before this goes live. You know, it sounds like you're right on the, on the, on the starting line to, putting it out to the public. Something that calls to me is, I, I think that each of the classes, each of the academies, that cohort, that 20 people that goes through that session is a valuable resource to us, too. And I would love for us to include them giving us a report out, or somehow coming to City Council to connect with what, what they, what their most important pieces of outcome were from, from their exercise. I just, I just think it's, you know, getting their input back to us is just not only a wonderful opportunity for them to present their findings, but a practicing how to engage with the city, you know, constructively on that level. So I, I would hope that there would be some kind of maybe graduating celebration and report or something where we can engage. And, and I do anticipate learning things from others. I do want to say that, there was a nuance with, to how, how it was presented right now, that talked about them learning a lot about the city, which I think is good. But I think what I find is the most time-consuming and, or needed thing with the public interfacing is they don't know to how to best engage, depending on what their issue is. So maybe what can come out of this is some sort of flow chart or something that, and I think probably Teresa Barth and Lisa Schaefer have this in their heads somewhere, too, of, okay, if you have this kind of problem, then this is what you do first. And if you get that kind of answer there, then this is what you do next. If, if this, then that, if this, then that. It'd be great to have a resource that helps people figure that out, because it's complex. You know, a lot of times, I think, even if it's a school district issue, they call their city council member. So, you know, it's like, it's hard to know. It's hard to communicate if you have a problem or need and have an issue that needs a resolution, how you move forward with that. And the other comment I have is I didn't hear that commissions were listed in your list of departments. And maybe it could be added because serving on a commission, as our mayor said, is a really great way for someone to take the next step then after an academy, to get involved with the city in a leadership position. So I think exposure to the commissions is a good thing to have, too.
Yeah, thank you.
And if I could interject, that is something that would be included, like, under the city clerk's role, because I do cover the recruitment. So that would be an example of something that I would cover when I'm talking about the city clerk's department. What, what do we do? And we would include that. We would talk about elections. We would talk about council meetings, how they operate, how to participate. So those are the type of things like, for instance, for my department, that we would talk about.
Perfect. Very good. Thank you.
That's good. You can have it. Councilmember Krantz?
Yes, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate the work. I know that this is something that's been talked about on several occasions. And it's my recollection that one of the models that we held up was Carlsbad, and he mentioned it in your presentation. How much have you added to, have we, did we start from kind of their foundation, what they do and work from there? Or was there another jurisdiction that you, you modeled this after? Or is this all kind of your own invention?
The unique part of the academy that we're developing for Encinitas is that we're taking an integrated look at, at government, at local government, and showing how, for example, finance and engineering and public works team together, so that people can also see how that interacts with their daily lives. So we looked at Carlsbad, and it was very much more textbook. And we wanted to make it something that was a little more reflective of how people live their lives and how local government is involved in that. So we're really just taking a more interdisciplinary approach. But we are going to cover every topic that's in the Carlsbad Academy.
Sounds great. The $250, is that something that will be for kind of a one-time deal for the, to develop the materials for the program? Or is it every time we have an academy class, we need to spend $250?
Initially, it will be $250, with the costs decreasing as the materials are built out.
I see.
So we might, for example, there might be some supplies that are one-time that they take home, and those will need to budget for each academy.
Well, you also want to stress that you're, that's a city cost. This class is not going to cost our citizens to participate in it, correct?
That is correct.
And I think that's a good investment in our community, because the more people we have that are informed about the process and, and how our city functions, the better off we will be. So I, I, I think that's perfectly reasonable, and I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henze?
Thank you, and thanks for stepping up as chair and being willing to lead this project and drive it. And I know you have a lot to do, but it's really great to see everybody working together on it. Just a couple of points, because we're at the initial stage. So I think it is really important for us to do outreach to historically underrepresented communities here in our local government. I think that an extra effort should be taken to make sure, because I think part of the discussion we had within our Equity Committee was how to get more renters to serve on planning commissions, how to get more women to run for City Council, how to, how to reach people that might not be native English speakers. And so if we can put a little bit extra effort into reaching those folks, I think it'd be really worthwhile. It would also be great to present the option or get some information to our high school teachers who are teaching government, AP government, and asking their 18-year-olds to consider taking the course, because we'd love, I mean, I took AP government, and somehow never did it occur to me to ever work for the government or the city. And I'm like, why did I miss out on that career path earlier on? So that would be cool. And then also, there are a few issues that I really hope that we can dive into deeply, because I think these are the areas where we're missing some of the rubber and the road concepts with a lot of our residents, and it's in the area of housing. Like, we probably need a whole session into, you know, why isn't Encinitas adding more housing? Why does it make sense to do infill? Why aren't we building in the backcountry? Some of those big topics that take a really long time to, to understand. And also climate action. So even just making it really tangible for people to understand why we take, you know, what's our climate action plan? How do these translate into daily actions in our own lives? And also spending a little bit of time on our nonprofit partners, because those are some really fascinating relationships, I think, including those with our Main Streets and the Solana Center, and other people who really, and even the Botanic Garden, they really bring this sort of whole school of knowledge to our city that we don't have to have in-house here. And then the last two things were, field trips are awesome. I'm so glad to hear that not all of it's going to be here at City Hall. It's important, I think, for people to come to City Hall and feel welcome here and comfortable. But also, like, my first experience at Badger facility was so cool to see how our water is actually treated. So those kind of opportunities would be really great to offer to the public. And then the last thing is, I think that, I think both of my colleagues who spoke already touched on this, but just getting continuous input from the participants, because I think we're always going to be refining this. And the things that might be interesting in 2023 might be done in a totally different way in 2025. So just following up every session with a survey, even a five-minute survey, some way that we can be saying, was that speaker effective? Do people enjoy that? Or can we just scrap it the next time and add something else in? So, yeah, those are my comments. I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor Muska?
Well, going last, I get to hear all these brilliant comments, and, and they are very good. And so I'm not going to repeat things that others have said. I do want to repeat that, that we're very thankful for you guys being involved in this. And I think this is the first time I've, I've kind of seen you in this arena. And so I think you're doing a really good job, and I'm very thankful that you're in that seat and doing it. So thank you. Only other, I would just highlight a couple of things, which is, one, the, the ability to use this as a vehicle to, to run down barriers and, and to, to allow us to kind of really, to reach into the community and get folks involved that not, haven't historically been involved. And so I think that these are issues that we've been talking about in terms of committees and commissions. And here's an opportunity to really kind of break down those barriers and really help people understand what local government does, and how important it is, and how they can be involved and serve in their local government. So I think that's important. I'd also, kind of, if, if, if I could design some of it, have some themes around some important topics that we're discussing, such as a lot of things that I'm involved in, which I think are critically important. Water is one. There, you know, we're living through a major transition. We're obviously living in a drought, and how do we get our water supply and make sure we have resilient and affordable supply in the future is such an important issue. And lots of folks don't necessarily understand that. And so, and it's also an area where we can partner with, you know, with the San Diego County Water Authority, which already has it an academy. And so if people wanted to kind of drill down even more, they can learn about the state water project, they can learn about how we move the water from the Colorado. There's so many more opportunities within that. And so I think that, that you could basically maybe even partner with County Water Authority, San Diego, our, our San De Gito Water District, and, and then offer the opportunity to drill down more if, if they so wanted power. Obviously, the, the safe, reliable, affordable, clean power in the future is, is, is something that's an important topic that we're all discussing. And, and the improvement of the grid in the future is going to be a topic for all of us to continue to talk about. So I think having some sort of theme and ability to talk about that, and how we can play a role here at the local level, is important, especially from a conservation standpoint, transportation, obviously, you know, having more on, on, on how we can make our roads as safe as possible, and how we can do our part to mode shift, and what that means. Housing, very, very important, which has already been talked about. And so I think these are some themes that I would try to work in, into the sessions as well. I think that, that we have, I don't know what the number is, you know, I remember when we had, we would kind of celebrate our seniors, we would talk about how many, you know, kind of just monetize, like, this is how much, you know, that, that you've saved the city in terms of, you know, dollars. But I'm, I've always been impressed by the, the number of nonprofits in our, in our city, and the amount of people that are kind of volunteering their time to give back, and what, how much that means from a monetary standpoint, but just also the, the quality of life that we enjoy because of so many people loving our community and giving back. So having, you know, some, some way of, of, of really kind of maneuvering, talking about and speaking about some of the nonprofits and having them in the space, too, would be awesome. Because a lot of them are on the front lines of, say, a lot of them are on the front lines of, say, transportation, housing, power, and they're involved as well. So, thank you.
Okay, well, that's all the feedback.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, thank you. We really appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
We're excited about this new program. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, so now we are on to, we have no councilmember initiated items, councilmember reports pursuant to AB 1234. Councilmember Krantz.
Nothing to report.
I have a quick report. Tomorrow will be the first subcommittee meeting of NCTD's Rail Safety and Quality of Life Enhancements Committee, so I didn't get it right yet. I'll have one meeting, and then I'll get the name right. But it's really exciting, because it's convening some coastal cities and inland cities to start working and developing projects together that could attract some federal funding for the quiet zone we want to see, additional rail crossings, just things like that.
All right, Councilmember Lyons.
I don't have anything official, but I did want to note that EcoFest was held this last weekend. Deputy Mayor Mosca, Councilmember Krantz, and I attended, and the city was well-represented. It was a lot of fun for everyone, and lots of art and music and wonderful booths. We did a good job there.
Nice. That's great. Thank you for representing.
Nothing to report, but I did want to welcome our colleague back, Councilmember Henze from maternity leave. It's awesome to have you back here on the dais with us. Thank you.
Yes, I also want to welcome you back. We're glad to have you back. Councilmember Krantz, do you want to say something?
I just, well, go ahead.
No, no, I have nothing to report.
I wanted to follow up and also add that the crew of volunteers for EcoFest was really a remarkable bunch of people, and I was feeling bad for John Giada, because he was having problems with his back, so he couldn't participate, and he did so much work to get the thing organized. But he had a great team of people, and they really did a remarkable job in pulling it off, and I want to be sure that we thank the volunteers for continuing to do that work.
And also, we should call out our employees who were all there on a Sunday, Esam, our general manager for Water District, and some of his employees. Roy was out on Saturday on ECR walking, I made him, we made him walk a mile and a half on ECR on his Saturday. He had a coffee, I think, but thanks to Jennifer Gates and Roy Sopato and his team that were out on El Camino Real, doing the El Camino Real Specific Plan Task Force Walkabout. That was really awesome, and we really are grateful that you guys came in on the weekend to do that.
I would like to also ask the city manager if there's been any updates on the lottery. I get a lot of questions about the lottery for the cannabis businesses.
You guys are stealing all of my city manager report items.
Okay, so we're going to go from, we're going to go next to the city manager report.
Speaking of the cannabis lottery, the lottery will take place to select four cannabis retail store locations. It'll be held next Friday, October 21st, at 1:00 p.m. Applicants will be notified this week of the date and time of the lottery, and there are some rules around the lottery. You can't just come and watch it, it'll be televised, we'll have it videotaped, et cetera. There's a whole bunch of rules around that. And speaking of the El Camino Real Specific Plan Advisory Task Force, city staff did conduct a walkabout on El Camino Real. It was about a 1.5-mile walk, and about 20 members of the public joined us. And if you weren't able to participate, there will be some information up on the website later this week.
There was a video made, too.
Yes, there's a video recording, so you might catch yourself on the video if you participated. Also, as you know from earlier this week, we have a one-on-one mobility striping project that's going on. Got off to a little bit of a rough start. The weather changed on us, it was beautiful and warm, and then all of a sudden, it's rainy and wet. So we're going to try something different tonight, and if it works, we'll be able to try a new slurry product, but we have some folks that are out there, so people could bear with us a little bit longer. We do know that there's some traffic impediments. And then, obviously, Pacific View, we opened our bids on the 7th, and we had seven bids, three of which were under our engineers' estimate, which is absolutely fantastic. And so, yes, round of applause for that. We'll be bringing forward a request to execute the construction contract and construction management and inspection services on the 26th of October. And that's all I have.
So can I just ask about the lottery? So October 21st at 1:00 p.m. So if people want more information about that, where do they go to get it?
So all of this information is on the website under Cannabis, and if you Google that in the search, it'll pop up, and it'll give you the information.
Are we doing anything proactively to let people know?
We are sending an update out on the website and to the folks that will be participating, but as I had mentioned, there really isn't an opportunity for people to come and watch it, it's very tightly regulated. So, but we will do an update. Did you have a suggestion on what it is that you, just to let people know?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if someone wants to know how they will be informed.
Yeah.
Because the people who are involved in it will get some notification, like, that they're going to be in this, right?
Correct.
Okay, but we haven't done that yet, or have we?
It goes out this week, so that they know that it'll be happening next Friday.
Okay, and is our website currently updated, under Cannabis? Yes, okay. Okay, great. And so just so that everybody knows, it's taking place at City Hall, and it can be watched on a video.
Correct.
A video stream.
Correct.
Okay, but the applicants will not all be here mingling around.
Correct.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for the updates. Any other questions?
How, when will you update the website to reflect whoever are the lucky winners? Will that be within an hour or so?
So the lottery will be live, so as, you know, people will find out who those are, so we will update the website shortly after the lottery takes place, so.
Did you have another question, Joy?
No, I just wanted to thank our city manager for that informative report. I liked it.
Yes, thank you. Okay, city attorney report?
No report this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, city clerk report?
Yes, people are probably finding in their mailboxes their ballots. The ballots are currently being mailed out to every eligible registered voter, and so keep a lookout. If for some reason you don't receive your ballot, make sure that you contact the registrar of voters. There's lots of information on the registrar of voters website, sdvote.com. And this year, the registrar of voters is actually going to have some dedicated standalone ballot drop boxes that you'll be seeing around. You can also go to sdvote.com, and they'll tell you where those locations are. But yeah, keep a lookout, and they should, some people have already received those ballots, and if you haven't, they should be coming within the next week or two.
We had talked about the law, the bill that was signed by the governor about the Brown Act, and I'm not sure if we're going to have more of a discussion in the future about that, or if we're going to have something in writing about the Brown Act. I don't know if it already went out, but if we could have something in the future, that would be great. Also, we had talked about the CARE Court, and also a bill that the governor signed about housing in a commercial zone. Are we going to have some sort of briefing at some point on those items?
Yeah, there's a couple of items that are coming forward as informational or presentation items. We've invited the county, that several of you have asked about different things. The county will be making a presentation on the by-name list, but we're still in the process of scheduling that. The League of California Cities will be making a presentation on the CARE Court, but we're coordinating that. Several people, there are still a lot of cities that are 100% virtual, and so it's, people are surprised that we're here in person, so that we're scheduling those. And then there are, I believe, our housing attorney is doing a memo on the different housing laws that were signed, and you'll be receiving that soon.
So regarding the Brown Act, so is that going to maybe be, it could be in writing. I'm fine if it's in writing, or I just want to understand a little bit more.
Deputy Mayor Mosca, so I understand you're, are you referring to the recent changes of the Brown Act that amend the longstanding rules about participating by participating remotely? That's what you're referring to, correct?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we can do, we'll do an update on it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that was the end of the city clerk report, right? And the assistant city clerk report? Yes. Okay, well, with that, we are adjourned.